Good evening. I'd like to welcome you all to the Planning Board regular meeting for Thursday, January 21, 2021. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, honor God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I will start to... Is... Do we have nobody else on Zoom for the meeting?
Nope.
All right, so the board members present tonight, I have Mike LaRue. To my right, I've got Jerry Graybill. To my left, we have got our Code Enforcement Officer, Mrs. Jennifer McCabe on Zoom, and our town planner, basically, James Bellissimo here in the room. Tonight, we are going to hope that we will get your thoughts and prayers for our chairman, Dave Andreessen. He had a pretty serious accident two weeks ago and has been in ICU and is in very critical condition right now. So please keep him in your thoughts. He's served here for eight years on this board. He's the only reason that I'm on this board. And, you know, he certainly has given an awful lot of himself to this town. James?
Yeah, thoughts with Maggie and Dave. Dave is an incredible asset to the town and just wish him the absolute best. So with the turning of the year, it's 2021. And what we do is we reelect the chair and vice chair. I think the board is ready to elect a chair. So if you guys want to volunteer somebody, you can make a motion to...
I make a motion to make Nicole Fecto the chair.
I'll second that motion.
Thanks, guys. All in favor? Can I vote for myself? Thank you. Yeah.
And if you want to, you can hold off on the vice chair if you want to do that.
No, I can do it.
All right.
Yeah, I would like to motion, make a motion for Mike LaRue for vice chair for the 2021 year.
Second that motion.
Thank you, Jerry. All in favor?
Cool.
And so it is.
Congrats.
Thank you. It's an honor to serve on this board. And I'm not going to do as good of a job as Dave did. He runs a damn good meeting. Okay, so that brings us to our first public comment session. The public comment session is open to residents of Berwick. Please come to the podium if you have a public comment and state your name and address. We do have a few members of the public with us tonight, so...
Hello, congratulations.
Oh, thank you.
Happy New Year. I'm Jody Rogers. I own 420 Portland Street. It currently is a medical marijuana cultivation facility on that premise. It's in an airline hangar that's been there since the early 90s. And I'm here tonight because I had submitted a packet for conditional use to expand. I don't know if you folks are familiar with the building, but in addition to the 100 by 100 hangar, there is a 40 by 40 building in the front of it that's connected. And it was always our intention to use that for retail. And we submitted all of our conditional use package to James back in, I think it was June or so. And we were looking to add the retail and some production and expand into adult use. And when we submitted the whole package and we had engineering and all of that, reset the wetlands barriers and stuff, James discovered that we're actually in the limited residential shoreline protection area.
Oh, what a discovery.
So that was shocking. My tax card says RCI. I knew there was wetlands, of course, but I was very surprised to find out that it was much more limited than that. So at this point in time, there's nothing I can do with that property except expand into some limited residential use, which I don't think is necessarily appropriate or ideal. So what I wanted to do was just to give you one of the current well, zoning and wetlands. So there are two RCI areas in town.
Oh, if you just want to wait until you get to the microphone, just in case. We do tend to have quite an audience at home.
So if you look at the shoreline, the wetlands map, you'll see, I've highlighted there, there's two areas that are shoreline limited residential areas at the moment. The upper one is around the sewer district area. And the lower one, the longer finger there incorporates basically my whole lot. So if you look at the other map there, you'll see the zoning is RCI all along there. That's Route 4 corridor, as well as where the sewer district is in the other shoreline limited residential. So basically, what I would like the town to consider is it's twofold. Number one, I think that this area is more appropriate to be in the shoreline commercial industrial, whether than limited residential. I don't think the back part of my lot is necessarily appropriate for residential. Plus, it would mean roads in by the town and things of that nature. And I'm not sure even from a environmental standpoint that it would be more beneficial, certainly not from a tax standpoint for the town. So I'll actually give you so... And maybe you folks have a better way of approaching this, but I didn't know if it was possible to take just the Route 4 corridor and change it to shoreline commercial industrial, or whether you felt it was best to be all inclusive of the two areas that are in question for shoreline. And the second part of that was, is if you look at the land use chart for the town, the land uses that are in the commercial industrial shoreline pretty much mimic the residential. And I think that's another potential misalignment. It seems to me that, I mean, this, these two fingers that you see that are along Route 4 here that kind of swing up, those flank the dog park in Berwick right now on both sides. And, I mean, it just doesn't make a lot of sense for this to be either limited residential or under the same use guidelines as the residential areas. So of course, it's in my best interest to expand that a little bit, whether you would consider doing it for marijuana use or for all uses that are in RCI. But as I said, this whole strip here, I think, is pretty much what, you know, what belongs there is RCI uses and not residential uses. So it's kind of twofold. It's a little complicated. James may have a better idea of an approach. But I do know that I've read through the ordinance and it certainly seems like all of the shoreline criteria for expanding or developing or whatever the case may be are very protective. And I don't think there's going to be any safety or reckless use allowed on that property, no matter which way it goes. So from an environmental standpoint, I don't think it makes a lot of difference. It's more from a zoning and use standpoint.
And when you came, because you came before and didn't we have, we had an issue with distancing?
Yes.
With yours?
Yes.
And do you still have that issue?
No, we're good on that.
Okay, we're good on distancing.
Yep, yeah. And everything that we had proposed in our conditional use application was set off even further from the wetlands. If you're not familiar with the area, the actual Lover's Brook there is at least 30 feet lower than our property. It's extremely dry. But everything, everything we do there, we can certainly comply with the guidelines that you have for shoreline. And I'm not sure if the state has to approve any change of use or whatnot in a shoreline that may be a hurdle of this. I don't know whether that gets done before it goes to town vote.
Yeah, they very well may. That's definitely, that's definitely a James question when we get into rezoning things.
So it just seems like it got...
Did you? There you go.
Oh, you've been involved with that already?
Well, it's kind of what we had down at Eleven Pond. You have to go through.
Oh, Jerry, would you put your microphone on just so, just so we make sure we hear you?
No. Yeah, I think, I think if we did some, I mean, I like where you're going with the SCI part. It would have to be some, and I'll tell you why. I mean, I think one of the things I rest on is there's a lot supporting commercial development along the rural commercial industrial zone. Say there's a way forward and I'll certainly, if we think it's a good idea to look at how to, how to do it. I mean, I think going, because you're talking about, I'm not sure if the, with the shoreline stuff, if that's mandated. But it's an attorney question. I'll look into it. But when, but what Jerry's talking about is, say this does go through, where you see a way through, you would be subject to pretty extensive DEP.
DEP.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would expect that, yes.
At the very least, a permit by rule.
I'm not sure that is.
I mean, we, the DEP talked about extraction. We want high detail extraction. I mean, I thought about if it can revert to the base layer for the use, that's one way through. But those are just considerations. There's also another question on if your application still is standing.
Right.
Are you past the cap? And then we have to look at addressing your cap, which I'm not going to say that, we're going to meet with our select board
Yep.
to do a workshop to talk about the cap and where we're at with all of that.
Well, I know...
Our agreement with the selectmen is that we would meet with them periodically or yearly, right? To review that. And we've got a couple of zoning changes that have been requested. So we definitely have to talk to selectmen about that as well.
Well, I know when I came before you, before, the guidance that I received was that if I got my application in
Right.
prior to the cutoff, that it would be considered in, in time. And that I haven't really gotten a ruling from the town.
Right, right.
So I think I'm still
Understandable, yeah.
in, under the cutoff, but yeah.
I would lean towards yes. I'll check with our attorney to, because the application's kind of in the pending review.
Right.
It's been in a holding pattern, but I think, I mean, I think you did a lot of due diligence looking into this.
And it makes sense. I mean, it makes sense not to have residential, limited residential out there. I mean, that's what we're talking about with, when our next public comment comes up, Mr. Amatucci. I mean, that's, you know, everybody's leaning the same way.
Okay, so I'll...
Great, yeah, so we'll, we'll review this with the selectmen and with James and have the attorney look at it. But thank you very much.
Awesome. Thanks for your time, guys.
Anybody else for public comment?
I think I can handle.
Okay, you got this? All right, perfect. So should I move on to approval of minutes then?
Yes.
You can tell I'm not Dave Andreessen. Moving on to approval of minutes. Has everybody had a chance to look at them? I know James got them out super late today before the meeting. I've had a chance to review them, but did you guys?
I've reviewed them.
Okay, great. Any questions or changes?
I don't think so.
Nope. So I just need a motion to approve.
I make a motion that we approve the amendments for January 7, 2021.
And you know, before we do anything else, I want to recognize Jerry as a voting member. I did not do that, so.
Okay, I'll second the motion.
Awesome. All in favor? Great, approved as written. Good job, James. So infrequent that happens.
That was a little.
It was a little dig. All right, moving on to new business. So tonight, we're going to talk about land use ordinance amendments for the June 2021 vote. Since every one of our land use ordinance amendments got voted down for this month's vote, apparently there's some big problems in the town with it. So we are going to redo these and invite everybody to come to the public hearing to discuss if anybody has any questions, concerns, or comments about them. But James, I'll let you go ahead with this.
Yeah, so on that note, I think there's only a couple of things that show back up from the last vote.
Okay.
Great Falls, they, who is subject to the village overlay district, they're willing to change their site plan to fit in. So these changes, I mean, a lot of these are simply cosmetic. We're really trying to make our ordinance more accessible to the general public. And that's getting rid of just language that's confusing. But also, Genai sometimes, frontage comes up a lot and access to lots, it's, it comes up a few times a month. So number one, you can see, what I did, I put in the revisions with the edits, which shows like if it's bold.
Let me interrupt real quick.
Yeah, sure.
It's come up twice today.
Yeah, and I think, I think this will help us. So anything in highlight, bold and red, that's added language. Anything with a cross through it is being deleted. And what's being deleted is, so within a definition is another definition. And that's a no-no. So instead of the definition within a definition, that's, that's struck out. And then it's just referencing section or Article 7.21. So you go from all of this to this, which is a pretty succinct. And it's not, I mean, it's not, the only thing is it's changing is that it's just clarifying an inconsistency.
Okay.
Because what that says is, it defines legal access to the lot as a way approved by the town, something that's shown in a subdivision plan or something that's deemed adequate by planning board. But on 7.21 and the way that the town has been operating for as long as I'm aware of, is the access to lot and dwelling unit standards. So being able to bring in a deeded right-of-way to get frontage off a deeded right-of-way.
Right. Right, I mean, that's, we've always done that. That's what it means.
That's what it is.
And that's where people get confused is with the deeded right-of-way, correct?
Yeah. So in this, this table puts, puts, I think it summarizes it in a small table, what's put into words. It also clarifies in our ordinance, it says drainage ditches and culverts shall be installed at all appropriate points. The addition of the language, I actually have to highlight and bold that because it is additional language.
Okay.
As determined by the town of Berwick or a third-party engineer hired by the town at the applicant's expense. And access for the lots refers to any streets, roads, or right-of-ways utilized access to slot. One thing to clean up is people will put in a right-of-way that becomes a street and then that's, that's dirt. And then putting off a right-of-way off that right-of-way.
Right, so that is...
And thinking that starts three all over again.
Yeah, you can't do that, right.
No, you're using...
Is there a way to clarify that within the ordinance?
That's what this, that's what this...
Okay, so that is, okay.
Yeah, which, that's the way we interpreted it.
Yes.
Because if you're using a dirt right-of-way, you're, you're using a dirt right-of-way. And the reason why we have that, A, it's a good way to control growth in our rural areas. But really, it's about a safety issue with road maintenance and a road becoming degraded and it becomes a safety issue for access.
Right, and that's why we wouldn't want a right-of-way off of a right-of-way because the fire trucks and...
Circumvent it for forever.
Exactly.
And then all of this stuff that's being deleted here is all in reference to a town discontinued road. Lot being created prior to 1987 on a town discontinued road. Allowing them, you can, you're allowed to build on that road, but you can get an additional lot if you deed it to a child. And it has all these stipulations that are just redundant from the already, the standards that are already specified in 7.21.
Okay.
So there's a whole page of stuff that's just...
I looked through that today. I was like, what?
And it's just confused, it's just confused, it's confused me before where...
So do we have discontinued roads with lots like this on them? What roads are we talking about?
Pigtails.
Okay, is this basically about pigtails?
No, it's just...
Okay, but is, are there any others?
Town discontinued roads, I think Love, I think Love...
Lover's Brook or whatever it is.
Discontinued roads. Can you think of any, Jen?
King, is King Lane?
No, King Lane is not a...
Was never, that was never a road really, right? Jen, do you have any?
Down discontinued roads.
Is Blackmore Road the same?
No, I think Blackmore was always private, but...
It is. Not off the top of my head right now then.
Coffin Lane, maybe one.
Okay.
That one's, that one's a complex one. It was Randall Road at one point.
Okay.
And then when they took the bridge down, it became Coffin Lane.
Oh. Yeah, I just, that's all I wanted, so I could look at this like harder.
Yeah, but it does, so crossing that out doesn't affect that part.
Right.
It only affects, and this doesn't even affect it because I just, I added that, like, it, it's still effectively, you can still have a second dwelling unit if you give it to a kid.
Right.
It just doesn't, doesn't reiterate these points that are already done.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering, is the, having the second unit, like, are, is, are they still have to follow our road standards that we have?
Yeah, they have to, you can get, so you can build, do one and then you get an additional one, but you have to build it to a two-dwelling unit standard.
Okay, so the, whatever the 15-foot, yeah, with 15.
Yeah, 15 feet wide, 15 inches of banked ground.
And just because it's a discontinued road doesn't mean it's a, it's a, it's a gravel driveway. It's a, just a basically, it's a discontinued road that is now a private road, privately owned, privately maintained. It's not an unmaintained road.
Right.
Okay.
Well, it's not, it's not maintained by the...
It's not maintained by the town, but it's maintained by somebody, by some association of some sort. What's the road off of School Street there where that, the house fire was a couple of years ago? That's like the worst road in Berwick. Jen must know.
Jewel Lane.
Jewel Lane. Is that, that's just a private road? That wasn't ever a town maintained road?
Private, yeah. There's such few instances and pretty soon, every lot that could have been built on, it will be built on.
Will be built and then...
Provision will be
Okay.
irrelevant pretty soon. But it came into, I mean, it came into play this past year, year and a half.
Okay. Marijuana.
So marijuana, it's, it's putting in the RCI with front edge on, not in four. It's clarifying that establishments under the same ownership on non-contiguous lots.
Yeah.
They can't leapfrog.
Okay.
So they apply. So like, if they're across the street from, from Route 4,
Yeah.
you can't have two of the same ownerships.
Okay.
And then exempting, we made that, is that a word, Jerry? Do we have a, accepting, right, accepting was the word. Exempting marijuana testing facilities
Right.
from the 1,000-foot requirement. And also exempt, exempt to get from the testing limit. It's a pretty low intensive use and would fit out there. Number four, just striking person. Person's already defined early on. I'm trying to get our land use ordinance thinner.
Why would you want to do that? So person is defined in here?
Yeah, person's defined at the beginning.
Okay, on page 19, under definitions. So where are we striking it?
Within the definitions part, but there's, it's defined, it's defined in another spot at the beginning.
Where? Like if it's not under person?
Let's see.
Under individual?
No, it's not in the definitions section.
Okay.
Uh, let me get that.
I mean, I guess we don't...
Page 22.
All right, so we have two definitions.
Yeah, it's just...
I'm not, I have it on page 19 in mind, but I think I might just have an older version. Or, you know, I, I copy and paste things in here, so. So we're striking it from that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. And then clarifying under agriculture.
Any, well, I like that.
And then the woodscape buffer.
Right.
Shall be enclosed by a screen at least six feet in height.
Yeah.
And that's, that's stuff that should be taken care of in, through subdivision review anyways.
Right.
Number seven. So within the village overlay district, we specified a specific type of street light. I just think that's a little over, overboard at this point.
Okay.
I just think that you just provide the provision that it has to, it either needs to complement the lighting out here at Town Hall or next to the bridge.
It's, it was Paul that wanted, it was Paul that really pushed for it because he wanted it to, you know, you come over the bridge because they spent so much time and money, you know, on Summer's Worth and the bridge, that he wanted it to all look alike. So how are we making sure that it complements that so that Paul Bovaire doesn't call me tomorrow? I mean, like, compliments, maybe we could give a couple of examples since there's, since we had an example in our ordinance already.
We might, we could put it, we could say it's this, like a, I don't know if we want to play if it's a suggested fixture.
Okay.
Because we do, maybe we do leave it in there, make it, like if they...
I don't see a problem with it just because we worked so hard on that, that downtown ordinance. Unless these, these lights are like so expensive and it's an actual developer that's saying, no, we don't want to do this.
I found the Walmart, like, like dollar value version of
Right.
the lights across the bridge that look
The same.
that look very similar, that are affordable.
Okay.
And those are the lights that we're going to use too, so. Maybe I'll just, I'll talk with Great Falls Construction a little bit about
Okay.
what they're thinking. And then maybe I'll take it out for now, because we can always put it back in in
Yeah.
November or something.
I just wouldn't, yeah, I mean...
Or take it out in November, I mean.
Yeah, right, take it out, yeah.
That's fine. I was going back and forth on that one.
Okay, strike it.
Okay. Strike the striking. It's a double negative, all right. Eight is just from...
Summerville from the rights, yeah.
It's just, it's an arbitrary number. 50 is still an arbitrary number, but it's still...
So number nine
Yeah.
is the, the maximum building footprint, which was something that we talked about and we talked about and...
Yeah, so with the max footprint, what was in the last one was just striking it altogether, not having a max building footprint.
Okay, okay.
I mean, I think putting a max building footprint there, or we could just leave it the way it is. I think the, the pro of just allowing the new 25,000 square feet, they're not going to have to, for the, their larger buildings,
Right.
they're not going to, they're not going to have to have two separate buildings.
Right.
All it's going to do is going to add costs to the, to their development.
Oh, yeah.
It's not going to, it's not going to drastically change the density or the square footage. It's just going to... But we did, I mean, we did put it in for a reason.
We put it in so that we wouldn't have giant massive buildings downtown because nobody wants giant massive buildings downtown. So, and I think that when we did that, the purpose was so that we didn't have big buildings. So what if we did something with like a, or what if we propose a breakup of a facade? Like the facade, you know, like you can have a 25,000 square foot building, but it has to look like, I don't know, five, 5,000 square foot buildings, you know, whatever. But because we want it to look congruent with the, with the New England downtown, that's the purpose, Jerry.
Could you put wording in here to say 25,000 square feet or as approved by, you know, they have to submit something
Yeah.
and get it approved if they want to go bigger and show why it makes sense to do that. In other words, there has to be a reason.
Yeah.
Then, the reason can't be just because I want it bigger.
Right, or because it's cheaper.
Because you can't go above 25,000 unless there's some, you know...
Yeah, yeah. I mean, the density is the density. You can, I mean, we have, you can have maximum density over there. So I know it's not going to change the density. And maybe the townspeople don't know it's not going to change the density. But our, my concern...
It just changed the looks.
Yeah, our concern is for the visual appeal of it. And do we have other things? I know, I haven't looked at that part of our ordinance in a while, but I know we put other things in there to also make sure that we got that New England appealing feel, so, I don't know. New England appealing feel, so I don't know. I'm I'm fine with this. I would like to see something about maybe having it look look like a broken up facade, though.
Sure. We have things like you can't have a blank wall for more than so many feet.
Okay.
That's one thing.
Yep.
The we have design guidelines.
Yeah.
And they they have to submit building materials and facades and elevations.
Yep.
And there is provision in there that the planning board has to find. The submission materials consistent with the design guidelines and the design guidelines have embedded. We we submitted pictures of our like favorite.
Yeah. Freeport.
Crosswalks.
How many times do we talk about Freeport during those months?
So that should help. I, you know, I can also reach out to Mike Lassell.
Okay, that would be, that would be really good. I just, I would hate to see, you know, we're volunteers here. We've been working on this stuff for a long time. I'd hate to see another six months worth of our work be shot down because somebody doesn't like this one little change. And and there is a, I mean, we do have a purpose for it, so.
True, and the. Great Falls has been willing to amend their site plan and they're they're moving full steam ahead. So they don't, they're not waiting for any amendments. They don't need any amendments.
Yeah.
Cruising right along, food sovereignty. I said it right, yes.
Good job.
So this one, we borrowed it from Lebanon, took out some of the flowery language and I'll go, I'll straight cut to the chase. The what happens is we adopt this and the producers and processors of local food intended for direct producer to consumer transaction at town of Burwick shall be exempt from state licensure and inspection. The state management ought to enforce those state food laws, rules, regulations with respect to direct producer to consumer transactions. So this does apply to milk. It does not apply to meat or poultry.
Okay.
I think seventy towns and cities in Maine have adopted this and our attorney. Is giving it a once over to make sure that everything in there is is in there. This this has been proposed to me several times by local farmers and interested members of the of the public. And I told them, I kept telling them, I didn't think we needed it until I'm kind of dense sometimes, but they finally. I finally understood it. It's about the licensing part.
Right.
But there's still, sometimes we're still gonna be subject to some zoning, depending on the scale of what they're doing, but we're generally very. Or we're trying to be very ag friendly and to be more ag friendly going into the future.
And they would still, I mean, and this is a state thing, so they, this is regulated by the.
Yeah, this this is actually something that is a state statute that is an opt-in thing. So it's something that was vetted through the main legislature.
Okay. Questions? Questions from the board? And would you like to talk about? Oh, yeah, look at that.
And before I forget, this will be posted online. We'll have a public, a notice public hearing for February. Fourth, I believe. And from that, from that date, we'll have the February, the third week in February will be the last time to make any final changes. And it's on to the select board process from there.
So what you're saying is the public has a variety of opportunities to come and talk about this, so they can come during the public hearing for the land use ordinance amendments. They could also go when it goes before the select board because they have their own public hearing, don't they, for what they put forward? So there's many opportunities for the public to come and learn more, to discuss it. They can come, you know, whatever, send us emails. We'll, we're happy to discuss. And we're just volunteers here.
Absolutely. And we're gonna work with Jody and look through legal. That would be the only, one of the only things I could see that might be added to the list. To look, look through it, but you can see this is how the process is. A lot of our ordinance amendments are citizen initiated. And we put it through the process and we try to, we vet everything and consult with legal and consultants.
I mean, it goes, yeah, it goes through us. I mean, we're just like, hey, this, we think this is a good idea. The selectmen, who are our town elders who are voted in to position. And it goes through legal. It's not just stuff that we just come up with to make people happy. It's definitely vetted. And do you want to talk about this last item?
So what I have here is a zoning request and see. Can I rotate it? Anyways, you don't have to crank your neck. So what this is, is we have a RCI zone off Route four. But it also, it also goes into residential areas as we went through with the Pond Road neighborhood. Where it probably doesn't make sense to have rural commercial industrial uses off of Route four. So this was submitted from the Pond Road neighborhood and I've proposed some changes to this. For my full, for my full support. So lot twenty four over here is the outlook and I would just propose taking that out, leaving that RCI. And if you come up here. Twenty three and twenty two, twenty one, twenty three A, twenty nineteen three, nineteen one, ninety two, eighteen, and seventeen. These are all interior residential uses and also include sixteen B as well. Then it makes total sense to me to rezone that to R three, which is rural residential. And I'll just make a note that leaving sixteen and sixteen A and sixteen one will remain rural, commercial, industrial. And. We are going through our comprehensive planning efforts now and one of the things that we're leaning heavily towards. Is making our zoning more granular and by that I mean having more types of zones in different areas that are more. Specific to the neighborhood, more specific to the area rather than just having these broad strokes that make up the zones.
Right, because if you drive down Route four there, it's all, you know, it's commercial, 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 and that's why a lot of our land use ordinance for RCI, we think about that, but. Failed to think about the beautiful neighborhood that's right behind there, that's still zoned, RCI. So that's why, and you're gonna run this through with the attorney because we want to make sure that we're not spot zoning, which is not legal. And other things, so this has to be vetted, but it's something that we identified recently with a long drawn out process. It was a nice year we've spent together, all of us, right? And yeah, and it and it makes perfect sense, so I'm glad Mr. Amatucci and Pond and Perry's Way Road residents that 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 was brought to our brought to us.
Yep, and that's a, that is, that's all I had.
Okay, anything from you guys? All right, well, that concludes new business. We are on to our next public comment session. Speak now or forever hold your peace for two weeks. Anything? Okay, closing the public comment session, informational items. James?
There's plenty of volunteer opportunities. We had five people step up to express interest in the planning board. So those positions are are full now, but we got Envision Burwick, we got Rec Commission, Historical Society, all kinds of projects, all kinds of ways to get involved.
How often does the Historical Society meet?
They're pretty inactive at this point, but we're looking to.
I have a sixteen year old that would be, he'd be great at that.
We do have some interest in trying to incubate it back up and get it up and going.
Yeah, that's great. Mr. LaRue, anything from you?
No.
Vice Chairman?
Good to see you.
Grayville?
Yeah. Nice to be here.
Okay, so that would lead to our adjournment.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second it.
All right.